That's for the budget, but if you're looking for. It was on.
I'd like to call the Thursday, July 24th, 2025, special meeting to order. Janice, could you please call, roll?
How's the member outland?
Here.
Thing here. Vice Mayor Maida.
Here. Here. And Mitchell is absent. Will y'all join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is by the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Going to get approval of the agenda.
We'll move to approve the agenda.
A second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, right, have it. Any public comment not on the agenda? Danny Chief? Nope. All right. Close public comment, not on the agenda. Tonight's workshop is a budget workshop. We have four items. One is review FY future year 2025, or fiscal year, excuse me, 2025, 2026 expenses by department. And three-year actual report. The second one's review inter-fund loan balances. Third, CFD review and direction for FY 2025, 2026. And the fourth one's receive revenue and comparison to budget report.
Did you want to start with anything, George?
I think Andrew is working very, very hard with the staff and I think you, for the most part, everyone will be pleased.
Okay, well, thank you for all coming together tonight. The very first item that I wanted to make sure everybody has, and Council probably already knows this, but I did this for the benefit of the community. It's basically our account format, so it's easier to read the budget because it's just a bunch of numbers and dashes. So just to go over the example of the accounting format, so the first four numbers that you see, like the 1111, those are your fund. And then I listed out the funds that we have, the general fund, gas tax, et cetera. Then after the dash, you'll see a two-digit number. That two-digit number is the department. And I have the departments listed. And then the last four digits are basically your breakout. So it could be small tools and equipment. It could be medical stipend. It's the actual category that it goes under. So I just wanted to give an overview, so this will be kind of like a key to help you when you're looking at the budget documents.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome, because it gets confusing. It's like, oh, wait a minute, was 65? Okay, so if you look at the first budget document, which you guys say updated on it. This is basically each department on a page. This was a, the format they used last year, since we were under the gun. I chose to just go with that format. There are some I've been trying, Jane and I have actually been, I've had her reviewing it, going through, because all the formulas weren't correct in it. So I've been trying to catch as much as I can as we're going through this, since this is a workshop. Anything that you guys see that's not right, please let me know, so we can get it all dialed in. So if you look at it, the very first page, like I have city council. And what I've done is just make notes on the right-hand side, very similar to what I did for the revenue. Anything that I thought might be a question, like in the office expenses, there was no budget, but there's actually some actuals in it. And that was for nameplates. They just didn't have anything in there. So every, you know, two years, you're going to have expenses. And also the software and the computer upgrades, there was no budget. That was the lens lock that you're doing for your close session. And then at the bottom, I just put if there was an increase or a decrease from the previous budget. Councilman Levine had asked to see three years of actuals. This document is a hand-coded document, which always makes me nervous. So I printed out what CASL, which is our financial system, and gave you the three-year actuals report. So this tells you every fund and what actually happened in that fund. Now, remember, these are not, it should have been in your packet, you're in the agenda packet.
What page?
It's called three-year, it's same thing that's listed. It should have been the second one in the packet.
E1, right?
This is all I received.
No, no, there's another, in your original agenda packet, the one that.
Last week?
Yes, the original agenda packet has a big document in it.
I'm looking online.
Okay, yours online. So it's right after this document.
Do you know what that document says? Because I can't see it from here at the very top.
Okay, I found it.
So this is E1. Is that, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Is E1?
E1 lists all the departments by budget. And then the very next item after that is the budget worksheet, which is the actuals for the three previous years.
Can you tell me what page it is? The page number?
Mine says page one.
Yeah, I don't have a page number for in your agenda.
It's.
Just go forward. I just need to see what it looks like, because all I have are landscaped documents.
In the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what's in the agenda.
Okay. Then that's not what I have here. All right.
Well, it's probably the next item after the landscape ones. So anyway, I chose to do the actuals exactly out of CASL, just so there was no way they could be. And if you look at it, what CASL prints out is by fund, not by department. So in order to get the actuals in, you have to go and find the number in each fund and add it in that cell, which gets very time-consuming, is what we had to do for the projected. So that, for three years. That's why it's in a separate.
You found it.
Okay.
It's on page 17.
Okay. So that's where your actuals are for the previous years. On these, but you just have your 2425 on the printout by department. So if you look at city council, there's basically an increase in your, what was budgeted and what was spent. And then also for the year moving forward, there's also an increase of 7,344. And for city council, most of that was attorney. And then as we move forward, and you guys give direction regarding this, there's attorneys, there's legal sprinkled throughout this whole thing. This just happens to be for what was considered council. And we have to have very clear direction on how to split it up, because there's some in tertiary, there's some in wastewater, there's some in, and then there's just the generic legal. Your second one is the city clerk. It's gone down a little from last year. This year is not going to be an election year, so that's why your expenses have gone down.
You don't put any legal in the city clerk?
It's never been in city clerk. I can put it in city clerk, but it's never been in city clerk. What had, how they had it budgeted last year was, they didn't even have it budgeted in city council. But we had expenses show up there. So that.
I just know that oftentimes, the attorney is drafting staff reports and calling for special meetings.
Which I think would not be city clerk.
Well, it usually falls to the city clerk to poll council members and draft staff reports. And he's, he's admitted he's done some of those jobs, and he's billed us for them.
Okay.
So I just, if we're going to divvy it up, divvy it up.
Okay, you'll, I'll just have to get direction on that. And then also, it would have to be very clear, like if it's a staff report for the city manager, I would think that would be not, the city clerk is usually just the items that are through that clerk position. Such as polling, but not for staff reports for the city manager. City treasures, the easiest one, nothing changes. If you look at administration, that went down a little. Even though there was the increase in the salary for the city manager, we left one position open, and we dropped the finance manager position down. So that's why you see there is a decrease in that one. Then we had an increase of, we're so good, we had an increase in our expenses for the next year that we're looking at budgeting. So the decrease only comes to $3,000 in admin. Recreation, there is a error on recreation. If you look through projected year end, it's actually not calculating correctly the formula for total operations, so I'll need to update that one. The budget is the same, which shows up on the summary sheet. And if you look at recreation, you'll have to compare that to, if you're interested, what you spent at ACRA. Which we can get in the details when we get into the summary. The legal page, I basically, and I took what they had, I don't, I'm going to need direction from council and city manager on what you think is going to be on the horizon. I took the budget from last year, which we went over last year, and this is just kind of that legal, that's just kind of the generic. Which is not always my favorite. I would like to know what it goes to without having to pull the journal. So this is one if we can split up would be great. Police is a much bigger thing. You'll notice this year, I've, we're using the cops, and they had an increase, and that was based on the COLA for the salary, per the MOU, which I believe ends this year, this next year. So that was their COLA increase. And then if you look at the expenses, it also had an increase, which is from, most of it, the majority of it, is from the dispatch and animal control. And then they had to try to reduce some other things to make up for that. They also have some capital improvements in there that we can address also. And looking at a solution for the police department. In fire, the big difference you'll notice in fire, under the Measure M, last year, they had a, the whole thing filled with expenses were coming out of Measure M. And I've spoke to Kenny several times, and he says it is to be used for personnel only. So that's why you'll see there's nothing for Measure M coming out of expenses, and there's more coming out this year. There is a little bit that comes out of the fund balance. We went over, I think, by 80, which we'll see on the summary. And, but they still have a fund balance in there to keep, in case something went wrong with Measure M. He still has enough to pay his full-time staff for a year. That's his goal in that fund. So I met with him, he's, that's still an option. So if you look at them, they currently pull from the general fund 276 from the general fund. And they had an increase of 27,000. They basically, their expenses stayed flat, which I've told him, if he needs more expenses, you know, please let us know. He would like to come to another budget workshop and do a presentation on the fire department. And I think also Public Works and Recreation would also. So our next one is planning. This is another one that's going to require some input if we think those developments are going to start hitting hot and heavy in this next year, or if they're going to be after July. Building inspection, you can see that actually it was lower than we were expecting, which is good. And it's actually a good solution that's working. So we have 50% of Jordan's salary coming out of building and the other 50 out of admin. And then this building inspection is currently for the Weber-Gio for our building inspection. So that's what that one's made of. Engineering, this one is another one. We'll have to, you guys will have to let us know. I don't know what's in the works for tertiary and wastewater. If there's going to be, or anything else that's outside of tertiary and wastewater. So the engineering, I just pulled the numbers from the previous, and I'll need direction. And then Public Works, which is a big one. So Public Works had an increase, and that was for the added staff. They brought on more people this year. They didn't have a big increase in their budgeted operating. They do have some capital. If you look at the capital I have, I don't have it coming out of the general fund. It's through the impact fees, the park impact fees. And I tried to base it, this whole budget on revenue and expenses and not pulling from the funds, since they are unaudited. I would prefer that we just look at what we're bringing in and try to spend within that. Unless it's a restricted fund like cops or Measure M, then pulling from those funds, we have a pretty good handle on those funds. And then also in Public Works, which is a little bit confusing, is the tertiary and the wastewater. And the other thing that happens is they clump them together in the budget, which I would like to separate out, because it's very confusing. I can't really tell for chemicals what really goes to, other than if I go and pull the actual journal, and I can see everything that's went in it, if I pull up for 3131 or 311. But when you look at the budget, there's no way for you to tell, like, exactly when you get your actuals report. It would be much nicer if they were just separated out, said wastewater, and then tertiary separate. So that's my one suggestion I'd like to do, if council says okay. Lighting and landscape, this one is an interesting one. I mentioned this one in the revenues where we had. So lighting and landscape is just the homes that have that $52. They're not part of the CFDs. They get that little, it's, I can actually tell you right here. They currently only pay $52, and I think it's 30 cents. And they pay 5230. And that's where the expense, this is where the revenue was coming in, and I budgeted. There's really nothing, there's no wiggle room, because it's either utilities or the maintenance. I'm hoping the utilities go down with the redo, because this was based on last year, so I'm really hoping that they drop. But if you look at this next account, this 911 account, and I have the notes on there, that account is not really, it was, they were confused, because they called them both CFDs. And that is actually a fiduciary account, where the bond money comes in when somebody pays off, and then the money goes back out. It has nothing to do with lighting and landscape. It was a confusion, and they put a bunch of expenses towards there. So we have to pull those back out. So if you see all these, the stuff that's in here right now for the fiscal year budgeted, that was for that capital improvement project for Castle Oaks, but it's just in the wrong account. It should be up in the 8221 account. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And we renamed them, so we won't have that confusion moving forward, because they were both called CFDs. Citywide Services, this is another one where it has basically the auditors, the legal, everything that's kind of an, everything. If you look, there's a miscellaneous expense that's kind of large, and that was the Han Foundation, where they put the payments for the Han, the Han family for the golf course. So that's why there was no budget, but you'll see $25,000 expended. All right. And then I'm sure you guys all have questions for me on the same thing. What I gave you today, so this was what was provided in the packet, and I provided an updated one today. I've been working on it. It changes daily, as Jane would say. So I provided an updated one, and then I also today provided a summary. And the summary is actually the easier way to look at the budget, because it breaks it down by department and then funds across. So it's a much better way to get a snapshot. And it starts with your projected cash balance, your fund balance, what your revenues are, which is that green line. Then all your expenses by departments. And then when you get to the second page and you scroll down, you'll see your total expenses. And then the yellow line is revenue over expenses. So this is not, that line is not looking at your fund balance. It's looking at the revenue you projected to receive, and the expenses were projected to spend. So I tried to keep everything at a positive, except for if you get to, you'll notice tertiary is not a positive. And then you have the pool recreation and the arena, which the pool is never positive. And then when you get into, like, you'll see the next negative is a 9513 account for the impact fees PDE. And that is because we're using part of their fund balance, because it's an impact fee. That's, that's why it shows a negative, because we're not going to get that much money in, but they already have a balance that they can use. Same thing with Measure M. There's going to be 81 that comes out of their, I think they start with 1.7. So when they're all done, you'll see two lines down, it'll tell you what the fund balance will be. So after that, they'll still have 1.3 in that account. And please remember, these are unaudited numbers on the fund balances.
All right, well, thank you.
So any questions you got for me?
I have comments on page, which is 24, on the online, which is your three-year actual.
Okay.
On citywide expenses. I do remember when Amy Gedney came here. We talked about this particular group, citywide services, where you just kind of threw things in, and nobody really knew what they were. And the goal was to get rid of citywide services.
Okay.
So my question is, I see bank charges in 2223. Bank charges, processing fees, 3,000. And then in 2324, it goes up to 15,000. And then this year, it's at 34,000.
Yeah, so the, the bank processing fees, that was one of the things I brought up last time, that's that PERS fee. And it's actually sprinkled wherever. It was like a $35,000 just that fine in itself for not reporting for the last two years.
Oh, it's the fine.
Yeah.
Okay. I.
So yeah, ouch.
Do we, do we not?
So I don't anticipate.
Categorize? Late fees and things like that, or we just put it in citywide services?
I would prefer we break everything out.
Yeah. There was another one here. Transfers in and out.
That's that one that went on the revenue. That one is incorrect, because it should zero itself out. So that's all part of the, when we talked about the year-end budget adjustment, we need to tackle all those oddball items that are hanging out.
Yeah.
From previous years.
Because it's almost a million dollars, but we don't know where it came from and where it went.
And what year are you on?
2425.
So on 2425, on which, on which.
Same page. Citywide Services, it says 94-9700, transfers out. In 2324, it was 7,900, or 79,000, and this year it was 981,000.
Yeah, and currently, right now, that's where the, when they're moving the money, it's going in and out of that.
But that's not revenue.
I agree. That's why I said when we did the revenue last time, and it showed on this actuals page, that it's a problem that we need to go research and look into.
We've, we could go either way on this. This money could belong in another fund.
Correct. And when you look at the actuals for 2425, like I mentioned when I showed this report at the last budget meeting, a lot of it's probably going to get shifted, because it's not all in the right spot. So those 2425 numbers, the numbers will stay the same, but where they go is probably, we're still making adjustments.
So, but my concern is, is it's being reflected here and probably somewhere else.
You're saying on the actuals?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yes, that is a concern. That is the point I made.
That could be a double figure.
Yes, that one, we have to dig into that to know. And so we haven't dug in yet to the 2425 and cleaning up all the problems that you see. And you'll find it on the revenue and expenses, the other report that I gave you, the same thing. We haven't tackled that yet. That's all has to be done before I can do the year-end budget adjustment that we talked about previously. Does that make sense?
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I got a couple, but let's stay on that page. We're still on citywide services.
On the actuals?
This one.
Oh, no, you're talking about the budget. That's something different, okay?
All right.
Okay, the budget of citywide services, the very last page of the budget by department.
Right, so if you go down that second column, projected year end.
Yep.
It's off by like $100,000.
All right, I'll have to fix that formula.
See what I mean?
Yep.
You almost got 370 in the one insurance item.
Yeah, and that's exactly why for this, I printed out the actuals of this report from CASL, because this is a hand document, and I'm also, it's already, each one has to be calculated by the fund and added.
All right. I found a bunch of those, so.
And there are.
I'll send them to you.
Perfect. That would be great. I would love that.
Because I don't want to be here, keep everyone here all night.
Yeah, that would be great.
Let's go over to this one.
Okay.
And I'm just going to refer real quick. This is just for this year, 2425, page one, over budget. Page two, under budget. Next one was the treasure, under budget. The next page, admin and finance, over budget. This is for this past year.
Right.
Right? Recreation doubled over the budget. Legal, double over the budget. Police. Under the budget, but the budget, police is under the budget for last year. That's good. Fire, over budget. Engineering, over budget by two and a half. Building inspection, under budget. Well done, building inspection. Planning, under budget. Well done, planning. Parks and facilities maintenance, over budget. Public Works, over budget by a million dollars. Lightning and landscape, over budget. Citywide Services, under budget. Well done. So there's a lot of over budgets for this year. But my question is, how do you pay for those?
So my, my first thing I'm going to say to you, and I'm going to reiterate again, those 2425 numbers are not the final numbers. They might change. So someone might now be over, like fire, if they're barely over, there might be something that's really not there and belongs somewhere else, and all of a sudden, they'll be the same or under. So the 2425, I think that's something we need to look into for that year-end adjustment. And there, you are going to be over budget no matter what, because every capital project you did was, had to, you guys approved at council, because there was no capital budget for last year. So you do have that issue. So, and then the other thing you had, I think there was some typos in the previous budget that was approved that we found. So you were automatically going to be over budget, just because of the approved budget was an amount that wasn't in CASL, so I think it was a typo. So.
Thanks.
All they pay is they come to council and get approval.
All right, got a couple more. Went over that one. The, the transfers in and out concern me. They're all over this budget.
Yeah.
Multiple places. I don't know where they're coming in from. I don't know where they're going to. So, and you said you're looking at that. Transfers, transfers, transfers. There's, for example, the donations, like Ed Hughes, I got page 43, but I was looking on PDF.
43 of what?
Yeah, of what?
The revenue and expenses or?
It was on the revenue and expenses, but I'm referring to a PDF page, and they're not lining up with.
Okay, what, what's the?
It was Ed, it was Ed Hughes. It's just, so there was an $18,000 donation.
Yes.
Right? And.
Yeah, of the, of the, yeah, and it shows as also an expense, even though we didn't pay, because it was booked as a capital.
Right. But the expense is on a different page somewhere else. It's not on the same page. That was, and I was saying that if someone donates 50,000 or 18,000 for whatever carpet or whatever it is, I mean, it's not really a revenue, because it went immediately out. And so I think it would be better if, if it was on the same page, so that you could see that that was basically a wash. Because most of the, if it's a donation, do anything you want with this money. That's a revenue, but if it's.
Will it show on the same page as we have to? It's money actually, well, I see what you're saying. If the money actually came in as money, it has to show like revenues from other agencies. It's not technically revenue, but it's revenue from other agencies, or funds from other agencies. So we have to account for it when we receive the cash, if we receive cash. In that case, we didn't receive cash. At the 18,000, we just received the actual item.
Yeah, my point being, is it wouldn't be better if it was going into a special fund, because it's actually. because it's actually restricted. It was for, you know, bleachers, for example, or whatever.
Right. And I can put it into arena now, but I can't put it into the revenue account. I can't put an expense in a revenue account.
Right.
Is that what you mean?
No, I was just saying, when you get a donation in, it's showing up as revenue. And then somewhere else in the budget, you got to go look and find where it was expended. And maybe it should just have a note on it, like this is a donation for bleachers. Or maybe should it not go into a restricted fund? Because it can only be used for, someone donated it for a doggy park or bleachers. It's not discretionary funding.
I see what you're saying. It's going into the general fund and then it's showing they spent it at Hughes.
Right, but it's not a discretionary donation usually.
Correct.
Usually someone donates something for a specific purpose.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. So in that case, like the revenue, let's say the $50,000 that was just approved, it would be in the Ed Hughes revenue, which is the 4311, and the expense would also come out of that 4311 account.
Right.
But the expense account, which is not the 92 instead of the 47. Okay, yeah, that makes, I totally agree. And I think if you'll look, one of the problems we had, why I said, looking at that '24, '25, is when Jane and I were looking today, we went and looked at the lighting and landscape because it was really wonky. And it turned out it's wonky because the expenses went into, when they paid the bill, it was put against the revenue account. So it took away the money for the lighting and landscape even though you can't have your expenses in the revenue account. So we have to move those out and put them into the expense side. And I think it was happening because the only difference is that that first, the first four numbers are the fund. And then those next two, if it starts with a four, that means it's a revenue. So when Council Payable was paying it, they were picking the first number that said, other than, you know, capital, other than building, not realizing that the 47 is a revenue and not an expense account. Because the expense accounts start at 5-0.
I think, any other, any other questions from council? Anything, Vice Mayor?
The only thing I see is that we're getting hammered on tertiary plan. That's the.
And we have been.
That's the big one there, and I know that we have been too.
Yeah, that wasn't a surprise. It was, it's unfortunate.
Thank you. I have no questions. Thanks, Andrea.
All right, I would like to say, yes, definitely work on like you've been trying to do, separate wastewater from tertiary. And it would be nice, like you said, to have all the departments here. It's time to do a little presentation for it. Other than that, I'm good. With that said, I'll open up to public comment on item one. Any public comment?
And hopefully the public doesn't mind if I leave all this right here.
Anyone on Zoom, Chief? All right, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to the second item. Oh, wait.
You know, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. And so I think it's going to be really hard until they get fixed to know how accurate these numbers are and what the budget is. For instance, the general fund has that transfers in and out that basically has 500,000 to revenue. So that's just got to come off there because that's probably an error. So until these things are fixed, I don't know, I mean, I think we should try to be, get them fixed and understand what the numbers actually work out to be before we start adopting a final budget. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I agree those need to be fixed. And that's why, one of the reasons I was just looking at revenue and expenses and not tackling all the fund balances and everything. But yes, I agree.
Any other public comment? Close public comment. Item number two, review interfund loan balances.
Okay, so interfund loan balances. This is something that you guys back in, oh, real quick, may I make one point that I forgot to mention on the summary? If you look at the very bottom of the summary page, in '23, '24, council adopted a policy regarding putting things in reserves. And I have that listed here so everybody's aware that that was the policy. But I don't show that in this budget because based on revenue, I don't think there's going to be enough to put into reserves. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of that on that second page of the summary page.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Interfund balances. So this is something, I think for the last three years, you guys had come up with a payment schedule, and they've been made for the last three years, not very much. But they've been made. Some of them were made even longer than that. I don't know if it was just kind of a hit and miss of how they made them. So the '24, '25 payment will also be made. It will be noted in the last period of the year and for these amounts that are listed. And then I have one item that I need clarification on and other thoughts. So when you look at this, you'll see that there's ARSA lent money to the general fund. And it's something that actually Councilman Atlin, that got me thinking, and Mr. Rhodes got me thinking. Because you have ARSA that lent to the general fund, then you have tertiary that lent to the arena, which is basically a general fund account. So my thinking was, when I called, I told Jane and I said, I'm a little confused because if the general fund owes the tertiary plant, but every year we pay 400,000 average to the tertiary plant, wouldn't those first payments just be considered a loan payment? And then they would just drop off because we've paid over a million dollars to them. So I don't know how we could still owe them. So I was hoping to get your guys' thoughts on that.
I'll give you my thoughts.
Because you're the one that made me think of it.
The ARSA fund and the tertiary fund were kind of one and the same.
Correct.
I haven't always agreed with the way that people have budgeted that tertiary fund. Because they put, like, for example, Amy Gedney put a $50,000 depreciation in one year. Never been in there before. Now all of a sudden, it's $50,000 in the hole. ARSA last year paid $20,000, which put it another $100,000 in the hole. So I, I mean, to me, that's like a paper account. The arena borrowed from it and should have paid back 650,000 over the 20 years. But we gave the arena a deal a couple of years ago. We just decided to charge them 350.
Right, which is general fund.
Which is supposed to go back to the ARSA fund.
Which is tertiary.
Sorry, tertiary, yeah.
Right.
We shouldn't be calling anything ARSA that's in the city of our own, like the ARSA pipeline and everything else. It's confusing. So I think I've always said, well, let's, let's have the arena pay back the tertiary plant. It's full amount, whatever it is now, 300. Let's.
Which is the general fund.
It's not the general fund. It owes the tertiary fund.
No, no, but the money comes from the general fund. It is general fund money.
In the horse arena?
Yes.
Well, it's, there is no money in the horse arena fund.
Right, but the horse arena fund really is general fund. It's just highlighted out for tracking.
Right, but it, it used to be its own fund.
Well, it still has its own fund number.
So anyway, I was saying, what isn't, it's just a paper transfer. And then, then Michael Orsery was going to look at it and see if that was, you could do that.
Right.
But that one would pay, that would back and bring down that tertiary down to, you know, from, from what it is, it would make it better by 400,000 or whatever.
Right, but my question is, if we've already paid over a million to the tertiary, why wouldn't that already be considered a loan payment?
That's a good point.
And then, if you want to set up, my one other, if you wanted to set up a arena loan, I would think the arena would owe general fund, you know, it would be within the general fund.
Yeah, that's, again.
You want to keep tracking it.
Yeah, that's a question for an auditor. Like, can you do that?
Yeah.
And then when you get things into the general fund, like the horse arena, then you could start defeating those funds if eligible. Because you're never going to get, it's never going to pay it back, ever. We all know that. So once you get it into the general fund, then you can just, maybe just write it off, you know, legally. And these are just things to ask the auditor.
Okay.
But you're right. If, if the tertiary plant owes the general fund, you know, $700,000, but the general fund has been paying $700,000, then it should be a wash.
Yeah.
Right?
That's my thinking.
No, of course. But that's, you know, we have to get an opinion on that.
Yes.
And on whether you can defees things once they're, you know, moved into the right account. Because some things you can and some things you can't. So that, and I have similar questions on other funds, which we can get to, but it's very similar thing, you know? Like, for example, the fire department owes a general fund for a loan for the fire station.
So I started doing research on that.
We could, so we could talk about that later. I'm just saying, there's more than one, like tertiary plant fund. You know, there's a couple of them that are, you know, out of whack and we should work on getting them in whack.
Yeah, I think they're definitely out of whack. This is the only one, to me, that seems like they're out of whack to each other.
Right.
They owe each other amounts, which, and we pay one more than the loan amounts. That was the only one that didn't, I couldn't make sense of it.
But I also think that, you know, you, you can, you can put $200,000 depreciation in the tertiary plant in this budget, and now it's 200,000 in the hole again. So I think that.
It's already in the hole.
I know. I mean, it would be more in the hole. What I'm saying, already account, the horse arena. And so I think you got to watch out on what you, what you charge to various funds and what you depreciate in various funds as well. Because, you know, you're not really out $200,000 if you say, well, we're going to depreciate it $200,000. You're not really out that money. The other thing is, when you didn't pay for the tertiary plant in the first place, how can you depreciate it out? That was another question for an auditor. It's like, can you depreciate out, like gifts? Can you depreciate out things that you didn't buy? You know, like the tertiary plant was bought by Castle Oaks Residence and the golf course. And so can you depreciate that when you didn't buy it in the first place?
Well, we do have to book it as an asset.
That's another question.
Well, the other.
I mean, it is an asset because it's, it's donated to the city.
Yeah.
So it's like the streets. But I'm just saying, you know, can you depreciate those type of things out when they weren't purchased initially? I'm not sure what the rules are for that.
Okay, well, and I'll verify, but my understanding from talking to Jane is they have to be booked as an asset, which then you would start depreciating it.
But if you look, you'll see that it almost was never depreciated, ever.
Okay, I'll put that down. And then one.
Same with the sewer plant. There's no depreciation in the sewer. See, there should be depreciation in everything. But the city doesn't, you know, it's never done that. Because it can't afford to. Because, you know, it would be upside down. If you depreciated, you know, city hall, you know, streets, I mean, that's really what should happen. Everything should be depreciated out over 30 years. And then when you come to replace it, there's the monies there in the funds. But of course, it's not just the city. That's just how government works generally. They don't depreciate things out as they should. And so you're always left with, you need something and you don't have the funds to pay for it.
So my question is, on the budget, the '25, '26 budget for the tertiary, there doesn't have that in it. Is there anything to your points that you want to change for that fund?
What page are you on now?
Well, the easiest one to look at is the summary because it tells you every fund that's, it's hitting. So on page two of the big sheet, the summary sheet, has wastewater and tertiary plant, which is currently part of Public Works, which makes it a little confusing. And then the detail for that, if you want to look at it bigger so you can actually see it, is the 311 account that's listed in the updated budget by department. Which is Department 92. It's listed by Department 92. And like I said, right now, they're clumped together, so it's really hard to tell what's, other than if you go look over in the fund, you know, if you look at this sheet.
I mean, you've got $150,000 here on things that I personally don't agree with. You've got citywide services, you've got legal, and you've got admin all being charged to the tertiary plant. Years ago, you had 50% of the police chief's salary being charged to the tertiary plant. So that, that whole thing, I'd have to look at 20 years.
Yes, but the legal is for SOMAC. That was one of the questions I need to know what, you know, we're still dealing with SOMAC, which is a legal fee for a tertiary or a wastewater. That's one of the things we need to figure out what's still in the pipeline and we need to budget for that. And it should, in my view, it shouldn't go into citywide. If it's for the tertiary plant, it should go to tertiary. If it's for the wastewater plant, it needs to go to wastewater. If it's for something on council. I think what could go in the generic citywide is just the retainer fee that happens every, you know, and just is always the same. That one makes sense to go in citywide because it just covers a broad everything. But the tertiary, the legal not putting it to, because the two plants were very expensive this year.
But the cease and desist is a secondary plant. Why is there any legal going to the tertiary plant at all?
Well, the tertiary had to do with the Title 22.
That's not legal, though. That's just an expense. So you charged, that was an engineering fee.
And that's what I'm saying. Right now, they have not, for '24, '25, not everything is gone where it should be going. That's that whole cleanup of '24, '25 we need to do, which is going to change, all these numbers will get shuffled around.
Andrea, wouldn't legal be part of Michelle when it comes to the Title 22 tertiary plan or?
Well, it depends on if she's doing wastewater or tertiary. Like you said, cease and desist is.
She's doing the Title 22 stuff, that would be part of the legal, wouldn't it?
For tertiary.
Yes.
And cease and desist would be wastewater treatment plant. Because they're both treatment plants, which gets confusing when, so I did talk with Michelle and with Josh because all the bills were coming in just as wastewater treatment. So we'd never knew if they were tertiary. Well, I wasn't there yet, but I know the Council's payable clerk was having a problem figuring out which one was what because they always said W W T P on them. So they've all now are breaking them out to tertiary and wastewater treatment ponds. Because then it's, for the layman, it's very easy to understand which one is the sewer system. Did that help any?
So you, I mean, you've got irrigation going to the rancheria, green, green rock property, town field.
Okay.
Right? Which is secondary. And that needs a Title 22 report.
Okay.
So why are you charging all of the Title 22 report to the tertiary?
Well, then that's, that's, no, no, this is exactly the kind of a feedback. Then if we decide, if council decides as a whole, we want it 50-50, then okay, we put it at 50-50.
It's, yeah, whatever it is.
Right.
You know, whether it's 50-50 or 60-40. But I see that a lot over the years where somebody just decides we charge it to this accountant.
Yeah, and it gets very confusing with wastewater and tertiary. Even just the nomenclature, nobody's calling it the same thing, so it gets very convoluted. So, yeah, whatever we can break out and understand. That's why I would like to break it out in the budget so it's very clear it's a separate department as opposed to in Public Works.
Any other questions from council? All right, open up to public comment. Any public comment on item two?
I'd like to thank Andrea for talking about the arena and the tertiary plant. Because that was $250,000 that was borrowed. I don't know how $600,000 come out, but it was 250 original.
Seven percent interest rate, 25 years. Well, actually 30 years now.
Okay, but that tertiary plant has cost a million point two, if I remember correctly, last. A million point two, that's a lot more than $600,000. So I agree with her. It should be paid off and that shouldn't be a problem. And I do believe it should have been separated when it first started. And I was here bitching about that then. Thank you.
It should be separated.
I have a question. Is the tertiary plant supposed to be an enterprise fund?
Good question.
I believe so. It just never has money.
Okay, the reason I ask that is if it's an enterprise fund, the assets that Dominic's talking about, if they were paid for by the city, then they should be included on the balance sheet of the enterprise fund. And then that would make the fund balance higher on its own. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Any other public comment? No. Close public comment? All right, we'll move on to item. All right, we're moving on to item three, CFD review and direction.
Yeah, so this one is the CFD. This is something that we've actually discussed before. We discussed it last year in detail with the finance committee. So what we need to do is I need to give direction to Shane Morgan, who does our CFD processing and does all the admin, and he's wonderful. We love him. So I know over the years, there was three years they didn't raise it. Last year, they raised all except for the ones who were paying the highest. So this year, Shane sent us the information and we just need to hit direction on which way we think we're going to look at, because he has to start making the resolutions and everything, because it'll be on the August 5th agenda. And then we have to approve it on, to get it for the August 10th tax roll. So if you look at the two sheets for the community facilities district, you have the breakdown. What he did is he included the, the maximum levy, which is the very one, the second one on the first sheet. It's in the agenda packet.
This thing?
Yeah, it says, "Community Facilities District of the City of Ione, Summary of Special Taxes for Services." No, this one?
Sure, right.
Oh, I thought today. No, not today, it's in your agenda packet. It's in your agenda packet. This is on the agenda. No, that was just another thing. I'm talking about the full agenda packet. So if you look at the very bottom of that. If you look at the very bottom of that, that he basically shows the maximum. George, I'm gonna steal yours. I need page two. And then if you look at page two, it says option one and option two. What he did is he took the option that we did last year, and then the option of the raising everybody.
Something to it here.
So we, we need direction so we can start doing the paperwork to figure out what we're going to do at the August 5th meeting. Because it will not be enough time to tell him on August 6th and then get it in by, the 10th is actually a Sunday, so it'll be the Monday, the 11th.
Why don't you go over what he's recommending?
Well, he doesn't recommend anything. He just does what we tell him to do.
So do we need to give you some sort of direction tonight, or can we wait till next council, when Mitchell's here and we can all get a vote of action, or how's that? Or is that too late?
Janice might be able to give me some information, because I know she spoke to Shane today on timing.
Is that on the agenda that we're going to take action?
It says direction. I just need, I need direction if we're going one, if we're going two. I know we're not going the maximum.
I just want to make sure it was clear on the agenda for the public that we would be taking action on potential new tax.
Don't say action.
Direction.
Says direction.
Direction.
Because then we get their input.
Well, if we give you direction, that's in action.
I think if you give direction, it comes back to the next meeting, right?
Yeah, which was the reason it's listed as direction, because I thought we were having one on the 29th, which would have, next Tuesday, which would have then been when you approve it and then.
When does it have to be put in by the August 10th?
The 10th, which is technically the 11th, which is a Monday.
We have a meeting on the second, right?
Fifth, unfortunately.
So I'll just weigh in my two cents. I don't think it's fair that some people pay taxes for police and fire that others don't. And the reason that I voted for this last year was because staff was going to go out and see if we could do a citywide police and fire tax, and nothing was done at all. So I don't, I'm a, I don't want to raise these rates. I think there should be a citywide CFD for everybody. I think everybody would kick in, instead of just having a couple of houses. I mean, that's gonna have to happen sooner or later. I believe sooner or later, the fire department's going to need to be a special district, and we're going to need funding for the police and fire that doesn't have to come to the council every year for a vote. It needs to be set in stone with a CPI and everything else. And I think the way to do that is why we spent almost a year talking about this. And what we all agreed to last year was to go out and look at the feasibility of a citywide CFD. And then it died, as I know it would.
Well, actually, last year, I was asked as a special project to start that, and that's the information that we brought to the finance committee. So I do have the numbers, so as to the feasibility. Currently, we have the total units in Ione are 200, 20214. And 1,041 are in Castle Oaks. The remaining city has 1173. And within the people who have CFDs, 204 at Wildflower at one rate, 151 are at Wildflower at a little bit higher rate, and then 475 are at Castle Oaks, which was almost double the rate. So you have basically 830 people who are paying those CFDs. And so to get it passed, you're going to have to convince the old timers who pay nothing and the people who pay not as much. So that's when I think they decided it probably would not get passed.
Well, we have multiple new builds going on at Wildflower. There are, that are not.
There's 18 that are going to be coming up, and I think there was 11 last year. What changes this whole dynamic is.
Well, and then up the side of the hill. There's a few homes going in up Sage Court as well.
Yeah.
I remember Dominic, you threw out a numbered?
I mean.
Last year?
There was.
Minimal. If it was citywide, it would be minimal.
If it, around, around $200 would replace the existing amount. But here's a couple of things. There's, so we've had two big bills with the police department in the last couple of years, right? Dispatch went crazy. Was it at $400,000 a year? Right, now we got, now we got animal control, which is another, what, 200? There's 600 right there. And everybody needs to pay for that. Everybody, not just, I mean, I, I don't pay, I don't pay it in, in Castle Oaks. I'm one of the almost free guys. I'm a $52 guy.
Oh, you're one of the original 250.
So I'm, I'm happy to pay, you know, a couple hundred bucks for police and fire. And I think a lot of people would do that. I just don't think it was given any effort to actually find out. And I think sooner or later, you have to do that anyway. Sutter Creek put in a half percent measure, and it passed. I mean, it wasn't for police and fire, it was for whatever they wanted to use it for, but it passed pretty handily. I think police and fire are well supported by the community, and I think that people would step up. And if they don't, then, you know, they don't, and we come back and we, unfortunately, you know, talk about this again. But there's a lot of expenses that I heard last time was, oh, well, it's all new growth, it's all new growth. It's got nothing to do with new growth. The city insurance, you know, what I just said, the dispatch, you know, the animal control. There's all these things that are just getting added on, added on, added on, that have nothing to do with growth. It's just California, or the cost of living, or call it whatever you want, but it's, you know.
I think bodies have to do more with the growth, the number of officers.
I mean, there's certain, like, you know, dispatch, what does that have to do with, with growth?
It doesn't. The officers.
Animal control.
Yeah.
People bring their animals in Ione.
Everyone is always paid for fire and police before any of this was here. We've always paid it. It's what I, from what I recall, it was houses that have sidewalks. Like, I don't have a sidewalk. I don't have streetlights. So there's neighborhoods that have sidewalks and streetlights and has to help pay for that. Some have perp paths on the road. We don't have that. Because we've, we've always paid for police and fire. The biggest expense, I think, is Josie's place. That's the biggest fire one, I think. Can you get 600 calls a year or something there? But.
So last.
So how we pursue, if tonight, do we, are we allowed to pick one or two of these? Or that's what we have to do, or do we come back, or?
I, I'd like to make a comment, too.
Increase the maintenance fees? Because it seems like the maintenance fees are only subject at Castle Oaks.
Correct.
Still landscape.
That, the lighting and landscape.
Lighting and landscape.
Besides those 215 people who only pay $52.
Is there any way to increase just the landscaping fees?
Yes, that last time, and they said it's written, the CFD is written as the items that are listed. So we can, like, what they did last year is they increased everybody but the one who was paying the highest, so it was getting them closer to parity. But we can't just pick and choose. That was what we were told last year by DTA. Because it has to be completely rewritten, which is a way bigger thing.
Because the cost of maintenance services, landscaping is continuing to go up. That's not going to go down.
Or what are we allowed or not allowed to do tonight?
As a landscape contractor, I guarantee they'll go up. I just have one comment. I, I understand, and I, I see where Dominic's coming from with this. And I also would be supportive of, and I'm not a tax guy, but we are revenue poor, and we have to really consider this and consider it seriously. But my concern is if we did vote, go to a vote for this, let's say we did a feasibility study, which sounds pretty, pretty iffy to me, and I would understand, you know, if I was a homeowner, why would I raise, vote to, to have my raise? It's going to cost us quite a bit of money to, to put it on a ballot.
Between, I think the quote we got, and I think our last one was eight, something between eight, 13,000. Now, what does change this dynamic is when Village 10 goes in, or Ringer, or Waterman, then you can outvote all the people who pay less, because they'll all be paying more. So at that point, it becomes an easy vote.
The only thing that I would make the council aware is that, as you know, that every year that you kick the can down the road just makes it, puts it, puts the, the situation further behind.
Right.
Just like the sewer situation. For the past 20 years, we didn't have one increase. And so now, all of a sudden, you know? So again, just, just keep in mind that, hey, the costs are, unfortunately, are continuing to go up.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm new at this.
It's going down.
So, so, I mean, landscaping and lighting in parts of Ione, I mean, is there, can there be like a, can, can we do something to where if we did sort of a vote out there that people over here would, would pay, but they would pay less? It would be like.
Well, that would all have to be determined by what you want to pass.
Correct. But that, that would, could be an option at some point. I mean, if you were to put that on ballot that way, that this would be going, I mean, why should people that don't have sidewalks?
Or a streetlight.
Or streetlights have to pay for that. It's a lot different than the sewer situation. Yeah.
So what do we do right now?
Difference is like $3,000 between one and two. I just need direction, what's the, we have to give Shane direction on which way.
Basically, no increase or increase.
Or option one or option two. Well, so option one is a regular increase based on how it's written. Option two is what you did last year, which was an increase that didn't include that highest number.
There's still an increase if we continue the way it is.
No, unless you say no.
Vote it in.
You have to vote it in. You can say no increase, which you did for three years.
Okay.
And then you said, yes, an increase for these people. And now we're to this one where you have to figure out.
Okay.
My, my opinion is that we should continue with an increase, but I think we need to seriously look at what we're, we're talking about here, about police and fire on this side of town. And, and certainly not, you know, punish people that, on this side, that don't have what they have over there.
I, I would recommend that you at least consider option number two, which is the least.
Do what we did last time.
Option two.
Which is what you did last year.
Which is what you did last year.
I, I'm good with that.
Because it's a small increase.
And it doesn't increase the highest person, 857.
We did this last year. We had the same discussion last year, that, well, we're not going to get the votes, so we're not going to pursue it. I don't think that's our decision. We don't decide for the voters.
Well, no, you have to decide to put it on or not.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm hearing is, we're not going to do that because we don't think it'll pass. So instead, we're just going to increase it.
It's not even close to what I said.
I'm, I'm, I didn't say that's what you said. You had your chance. Let me speak. You said you, you had the figures and it wouldn't pass when you put it up against.
No, I didn't say it wouldn't pass. I'm saying, I'm just giving you the numbers of what you need and what the, that you have.
Okay, so then, why aren't we putting it out to a citywide vote?
That's up to council.
That's council's decision.
That's what I'm trying to say, George. To continue to tax just the neighborhoods while everybody is used. And we're not talking about the lights and the landscaping, because there's only a select few in Castle Oaks that pays for that. We're talking about fire and, and police services.
Yeah, there's 475 that pay the lighting and landscape and the CFD.
Right, I understand. So that's a citywide service. Don't lump it in with the maintenance and the lighting. I don't agree on raising that, those taxes for certain individuals only. And like Dominic said, okay, we're not going to do it this year, but what are we going to do next year? And the year after, and the year after, and the year after. So I'm not, I'm not willing to raise anybody's, anybody's taxes for service that others don't want to pay for. So that's, that's where I'm at. And I know you want it to increase revenue, but the fact that we are over budget, we think, because we don't know the numbers, tells me that we're not being very fiscal responsible on our spending, and we're going to try and put it on the citizens. So I mean, there are other avenues to create revenue. Putting money towards revenue sources, things that make money. But, yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of increases again, and that's just where I stand.
So for clarification, this isn't a tax we're looking to put on someone. This was when the development came in.
I under, I understand what they are. I've, I've listened to them every single year. I pay the tax as a homeowner in Wildflower. Some of Castle Oaks, not all of Castle Oaks. We all pay different amounts. But what I'm hearing here is the council wants to raise the taxes again, and we raised them last year.
Yeah, it's scheduled to be raised every year in the CFD.
But we, we did put a freeze on them for.
You did, for three years.
Yeah.
And then last year, you did the one, so the eight, the people who pay 857 didn't get.
I understand. I, I was here. I'm, I'm just giving my side. I, I don't mean to debate with you. That's my opinion. We should not impose a tax on certain individuals in the town. Period.
But it's already there. I'm not, okay, I just want to make sure everybody, I just want to make sure the community.
Statement. I'm not asking questions.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's clear that it already exists. This is not a new.
It does exist. We all.
I just want to make sure.
Well, one thing I, I will clarify is that when all of these individual homes were purchased, they were aware that, that the tax is there. It, they didn't, you know, everything was disclosed. This is not a surprise.
No, it's not a surprise, but the surprise was that the rest of the town doesn't pay it.
Because it was put for the new development.
I understand that.
Yeah, and it's done when the developer owns the property.
So understand how it all works. Would you say you knew it, so you should pay it? At a time where we're looking at growth, at a time where we're looking for revenue, how much more revenue would we get if this were citywide?
That depends on what you decide.
But it would be much more.
Well, I think the original.
It's okay.
The original suggestion was to make it the same, not more, and just spread it out to everybody.
And, and the increases would be minimal if it were spread citywide.
Well, I guess one of us needs to make a motion on something or whatever.
The, the.
Direction.
Just give us direction. My, 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 my rule is to, to, to do the minimal amount of tax.
To?
And I would like to, I don't know if this is time to do it, but I would like to get very serious about leasing fire for this side of town. It's not, I, I live on this side of town. I'm more than willing to pay more, and it's, it's not. And it's it's not about equity, because some people get certain things out of than others. So rather than than have a speech here, I I I support number two. And with the caveat that we.
May I suggest, may I suggest the council up for option number two and then instruct staff to do what is necessary to get it on the ballot?
Did that last year.
Explore it. Yeah, we tried that last year.
Well, we can do it.
I think the difference that you say explore to and get it on the ballot is different than just explore.
That's direction to get it on the ballot.
My direction is just go item two right now, which is option two.
And my, I I want to, I want to add to that, that I want to explore to get it on the ballot and seriously explore. I mean, that's just, I I have faith that we can do that.
So if three council members give you direction to put it on the ballot, that is all you need.
Well, that gives us direction and bring it back to approve it.
Bring it back for another agenda.
We could bring it back August 5th. Here's the official.
It's the option two out there, so that's taken care of for you.
Right. Because we have to let Shane know.
Let Shane know what to do.
Well, that's not direction. That's coming back. It'll come back on the fifth. We're not voting on taking option two right now.
Right, I have to have direction so he can create the document so I can bring it back for approval on the 5th.
Right.
And then on the 5th, you would decide.
See, that's why. Give us a direction to put it on the ballot. Okay, put it on the ballot and then it'll be approved on August 5th.
Okay, now we're getting all mixed up.
Okay, we got to figure. Well, I I, once again, I asked that we put this uh, number two, I mean, number two, and then we come and speak about, talk about on the 5th, give Shane direction.
Like, it doesn't need to be put on the ballot for this November because we're probably going to miss it. But as long as.
There's an election and we're going to miss that.
Yeah, we're going to miss that. I'm kind of a little bit like, well, that's what we said last year and didn't happen. But if we got three votes that'll for sure get it on the ballot sometime next year, then I would support, but it's going to come back on the 5th, right?
August 5th, yeah.
Right, so right now it's just direction. We're not voting. So I would, we actually vote on the 5th. So if on the 5th you bring me back that we're seriously going to put it, look at putting it on the ballot, but not this November because we're going to miss it. But we have to do it right and we have to get buy-in by everybody, then I would support the the minimal raise, which I think is two.
Okay. There's no election this November. It's next June 2nd.
So November 26.
June 2nd.
Either June or.
Sorry.
June or November of next year. That way we don't have to pay any fees.
So June, yeah.
And we have time to.
You have to pay a small fee. It's just not as much because it's not a special one.
Okay.
And can we make it very clear on the agenda that we are looking at raising the CFD taxes so the public is aware?
Yeah, it'll be like it was listed last year, which tells you exactly.
Yeah.
The resolution. It's got everything, the resolution, the staff report from Shane. It's got the whole packet in it. Okay.
Right.
All right, so number two. And looking at August 5th, having a statement that says we are going to look at putting it on the ballot for June 26th.
Correct.
Okay. Option number two.
All right, we'll open up to public comment.
June 2nd. June, June 26th, the 20.
Oh, the 2026.
Yeah, 2026, sorry. Now I'm going to have my own. Okay.
Public comment. Larry's wanting to talk.
Clarify this for me. Is CFD the same thing as Melrose? It's different.
Different, but it's close.
It is close. I asked this question. It is actually under the Melrose law, so people get it confused because they consider it a Melrose, but it's a community facilities district within the Melrose law, but it's different than your Melrose bond.
So if you paid off your Melrose bond, this is in addition to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Special tax.
I I have no problem with that. I have no problem supporting police and fire because if you don't take care of your, your police and fire department, your city is going to go down in flames one way or another. My concern is we are facing a serious, serious revenue deficit. And we keep screwing around with peanuts and pennies. We need to have a serious plan on how you're going to address this thing in the next few years. Because if you don't get it done, whatever you're trying to do now isn't going to get, isn't going to make it happen. You're not going to cut your way to profitability or even break even. It's it's not going to happen. Inflation will kill you. We've, we've been talking about industrial parks, getting commercial revenues up, and we we just piggyball service to it. Previous, previous councils have voted against it. When we had an opportunity to do it and have the the property donated, we voted against it. We should have been doing that when construction permits were our source of revenue and we were doing very well. To put that in place as a backup plan so we were diversified, we didn't. So when you don't have a diversified portfolio, when your main source of revenue goes away, ultimately you go away. So I don't understand why there isn't a very serious aggressive plan to increase revenues in this city and it's not going to happen with 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 construction permits in the near future.
I agree.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, I remember that. You got a last thing?
I I would dislike to mention there's a couple of councilmen that stopped the company from coming here. It's talking about millions and millions of dollars in revenue we've got from sales tax, a lot more than that prison. I heard the prison is going to give you $5 million. We got 37,000. I can remember that. And what a big bunch of bull. Then you get a company that wanted to move their office here and sell the stuff in the city, and now the county is going to get it. This is crazy. Thank you.
What what project was that, Larry? Please, I'm stuck. What project was that?
What a project. You guys killed Badmouth US Mine, both of you. Badmouth them, and they know it. What the heck do you think the guy that owns it was here for? Thank you.
You mean US Mine in the county? That one?
Huh?
US Mine is not even in the city of Ione?
I know that. They wanted to move their office in this city and you guys killed it. Thank you. Oh, that's the truth. Don't kid yourself.
So I I tonight, if I, can I comment?
Go ahead, George.
I I think the discussion tonight is centered around, you know, what is categories is what. But Mr. Caputo is right. I think everybody in the council agrees that the sole or one of the main priorities is is to generate or explore opportunities for revenue. So coming forth, you know, I'll be doing a State of the Union here very, very shortly. And I will provide three or four concrete ways to increase revenue significantly. So the staff is working on some some plans and I think going forward, that is one of the top issues that the the staff has been working on is how to generate revenues. Our our revenues have been stagnant over the past 10 to 15 years. They haven't gone up. Our costs have gone up primarily because the 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 population has grown. There's been a lot of of houses being built, but houses don't create revenue. They create more expense. So again, we're way behind the curve. Unfortunately, in the past, we've we've lost some opportunities because of one issue or another. But with some of the developments coming, we will have opportunities and leverage to make sure that the city gets the maximum, you know, potential opportunities for revenue. So those are all all coming forward. So I would advise the council, when that does come forward, please be bold, please be courageous and take the action necessary to generate the revenues. But they will be coming. They will be coming. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Andy, go ahead.
We have a A-plus fire department. We have one of the best fire departments probably in Northern California, maybe. I don't know, but we have a hell of a good police department too. Because if you read the paper, you'd know, you know, a lot of people don't. The thing is tonight, you guys are going to have to say a little more than what you're saying because people are listening. It's going to get on Facebook. I would like to know now, if you raise it, is it going to be a yearly fee or a monthly fee?
For what? The what we just voted in?
Yeah, to to raise money for the police and fire department.
You mean in a citywide CFD?
Yeah.
That would go to a vote.
It would be a yearly.
Be an annual.
Well, no, what I'm saying is now do the, over Castle Oaks, do they, and over here at Waffle, do they pay yearly?
Yes, with the taxes.
Okay.
Twice a year.
Huh?
Twice a year.
Twice a year with the property taxes.
Well, I mean, it's just on one, you get one bill from the county. It's just one bill you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And how much is it?
For some people, it's like $900.
900, yeah. But you'll have, you'll have to put it in in stone and explain to everybody how much you're going to raise it and everything. I mean, that's one, that's going to be your big problem. If you raise it $900 a year, you're not going to get it passed because people are going to get scared.
It's not going to be that.
Because you see what happened. People got scared for, what was it? We raised the sewer and we had to raise the sewer to pay for chemicals and stuff. You have to put everything in stone and and do it sooner than later. Because people are going to start getting on Facebook and scare everybody. So you got to hurry up and figure out what you want to charge before you go too far. So but 900, 900 a year, I don't know if people are going to go for that.
It's not 900 a year.
No.
Not even close.
So what is it?
475 is it will be the most.
No, it's.
A number that was thrown out and it's just a number was around two, around two.
So currently, there's 204 homes that pay 435.98. There's 151 that pay 446.68 and there's 475 that pay 857.20. They're the ones that are closer to the 900. And so they are talking about taking that whole amount and it's spreading it through the whole, so it comes down way lower to like two or three. Whatever the number.
Probably 300, 300 a year, you could probably get away with that, so. In the city of Ione, you know, we got to do it because if you don't have a police department or a fire department, you might as well move on to Nevada or somewhere. Thank you very much.
Good, good, good. Thank you, Andy. Any other public comment? Got someone on Zoom, chief? Go ahead on Zoom.
But unmute yourself.
Unmute yourself on Zoom who's ever trying to talk.
Call me.
Call me now.
Can you hear me?
There we go. Got you.
Okay, I live on Callaway or have a house on Callaway. I think state or citywide, everybody should pay the same because my taxes is one of them is the is the 800. And I think that they, everybody has the same service. We should all say, pay the same price.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
No, all right, closed public comment. Okay, you have direction. Let's move on to item four, receive revenue with comparison to budget report.
And that's just an update of what I gave you guys at the last workshop meeting. This is the one that I'd like to provide. I think you guys used to get it quarterly previously and you hadn't received in a while. So this was just an update of where we are. It's still going to change because we're still having June items come in. So this was just an update to what you had last time, just to keep you in the loop. So there's nothing real discussion other than let you know where we stand. And they still have to be adjusted.
Any questions or discussion on that? All right, any public comment on it? Anything? All right, they get a motion to adjourn?
Before that, I would like to find out what the council would like moving forward. I know the departments would like to make a presentation if you're interested in presentations. So I just need direction that actually is going to go through George of when you would like to meet or if you want to meet and what you want the next meeting to entail.
For me, if we're going to do the budget again, we got to fix all the errors before we get it back.
Okay.
But if the department heads want to make a presentation at any time, they can, whenever they like, really. Because it doesn't really affect the budget until, or are they going to talk about their budget that they want more?
Probably, yes, we have a big wish list for every department.
Sure. But one more thing I want to say is that you did a really good job here with, you only took out a couple hundred thousand from gas tax instead of 1.1 million.
So that's not feasible.
So how did you do? I'll ask this another time, but that was well done. Just wanted to give you kudos for that.
Well, thank you.
We got what you need.
Uh, yeah, so it'll be probably the middle of August because we have the August 5th. There's the week after that that I'm not available, so like the third week in August. The problem we have with Thursday is we're always going to be missing Jack. And I know we have a scheduling conflict, I think, with Mondays and Wednesdays. And Tuesdays are taken up unless we have a fifth Tuesday. So if you guys have another day, I just, I'm going to put this out there, not that anyone's going to say yes on Fridays. What are your thoughts for days of the week?
Jack can't do Friday either.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing it a different day because we've done two Thursdays and let Jack have a chance to be here. So I'm I'm kind of, whatever, whatever the rest of the council want to do.
I'm hoping just put it out on an email and see who can shoot for a date and go for it.
Well, if you don't start it at 6:00.
What's a date?
On Monday or Wednesday. Because I don't get back until about 6:30.
So you're saying Monday or Wednesday could be a 6:30 start?
You put it at 6:30.
Okay.
Hey. It's going to be a long day.
With that, can I, oh, and one more thing. Tell Jane thank you very much.
Oh.
All the years she's put in doing this kind of CEDs.
I don't know if, I'll just put this on the record. So I don't know if all of you realize exactly how much Jane has supported this city since she retired in 15. She's been in the background doing the majority of the work that entire time. And she continues to help with whatever I need, plus the audits. So, yeah, she, the city could not be functioning right now without Jane.
Got one question before we adjourn. You said we're going to get the audit here by the end of the month. Is that still on track?
So I did hear from the, it's now moved from the auditor, which I'm waiting for the reply from them. It's moved from the auditor to the senior auditor, which then he had more questions, so Jane wasn't very happy. So I'm waiting for a response back from Brian Nash, who is the partner. So we've made one more step. And now the last step is Brian Nash, so we'll see how that, obviously, we're not going to, I don't think, meet the 29, the 30th. But I will, by the 5th, at the next council meeting, I'll have the update from Brian.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you you think you'll have all of those things fixed by the next budget meeting?
Yeah, especially if anything you guys find, let me know. That just helps the process. And then I'll continue to plug away at it. And the other item I'm working on is I'm going to look at putting it in Casell, the numbers I have. So then it's clean in Casell and I can print you budget reports out of there. Unfortunately, Casell will not print a budget by department like the summary sheet, which to me is the easiest way to look at this budget. I actually even called support and we weren't able to. So but I can do in my Excel report, it's just going to take some time, which pulls directly from Casell. So we're not doing data entry, which always makes me, I'm always hesitant.
Good job tonight, Andrea.
Thank you.
Get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, have it. Good night.